Call to order the May 13th, 2019 Latrobe City Council Meeting. Please stand for the pledge of the flag.
I pledge the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This time I would ask for a moment of silence to give thanks, to ask for guidance, or to just quietly relax. Thank you. Roll call, Ms. Peton?
Mrs. Baldieri.
Here.
Mr. Forrest?
Here.
Mrs. Weller?
Here.
Mr. Kelly?
Here.
Mr. Jankow?
Here.
Mr. Bartels?
Here.
Mayor Wolford? Here. May I have a motion to approve the minutes from the April 8th, 2019 City Council Meeting?
Madam Mayor, I move that the minutes of the April 8th, 2019 meeting be approved and accepted and be permitted to remain on the secretary's desk where they will be available for reading and inspection to anyone.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. May I have a second, please?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Mr. Baldieri. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. May I have a motion to approve the fiscal department reports and the paid bills for the month of April 2019?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Jankow. May I have a second, please?
I'll second, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Forrest. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries unanimously. At this time, we have our citizens' request portion of the meeting. Any citizens that have anything they want to discuss related to items on the agenda, please go to the microphone. Going once, going twice. No citizens' requests. Committee reports. Finance committee. I don't think we have anything Mr. Kelly doing.
No.
Public safety and fire?
I have nothing to report at this time, Madam Mayor.
Public works?
We have nothing, but I've also held off calling a meeting, going through just, you know, you being on double duty. So let me know, you know, when you're, think you're settled and...
Personnel committee. We did have a personnel committee meeting just to discuss some personnel
issues, but not to really to report. Events committee. Christine?
I walked downtown Wednesday night. I don't know if a lot of you have seen what's going on the first Wednesday of the month, and it was really a nice event. You know, there were people out, there were people milling around. It was, you know, the storm runners were excited to have the time available, and I just think it's going well, so.
Thank you. And Eric, you want to update us on the showcase?
Yes, Madam Mayor. Normally, we would have done the student showcase at this meeting, but due to a conflict tonight as well as in June with the school district events, we are going to do a word of the student showcase at our next meeting, which will be our prep meeting in two weeks. Well, two weeks plus a day.
May 28th, I think, right?
Yes.
Okay. Board of authority reports?
Something new, Madam Mayor.
Jerry, anything come?
No.
Okay. Any update on library?
No, not this time.
Okay, department reports. Mike?
Couple things. First thing is, I provided council with an email a while ago about the Shoal Place underground survey of the wiring issue. One of the things is, some of the repairs that need to be done, I think there were three separate areas where repairs needed to be done. That total would be about $12,062. Under this, the repairs wasn't budgeted item for this year, although it is reversible under the tax funds. So it's something for us to talk about, decide if we're going to move forward on having it done this year or wait until next year or if we can budget appropriately and have it done. The same issue, I wouldn't mind waiting until next year until we can coordinate everything with traffic signal, see if there's any change. If we don't want to do something, all of a sudden, you know, change happened and everything. So we can discuss that, you know, later on. The other thing, too, is I finally got back the proposed price for doing stormwater user fee, 10% aerial inventory study from Gibson Thomas, and that total cost was $8,800 to do the study. And what that is, it includes the study for the residential, the commercial, industrial, home, and tax exempt properties. Again, that wasn't a budget item, but moving forward, we have to do stormwater management user fee, so it's something that we'll get to. We do have the funds under capital. That way, we don't have to affect our general operating budget.
Did they give you a timeframe?
No timeframe. Well, how long did it take? So I'm sure exactly. I'll report on that shortly.
We don't pay till it's done, right?
No. The 10%, the residential won't take long at all, because what it is, it's 336 properties and taking an average based upon how fine the year is. Commercial, industrial, tax exempt, all those properties have to be managed separately to the actual appropriate service area on those properties. So, but that was that. Let's see here. Last year, April 9th, we authorized, along with the roof, the heating and air conditioner system, and also the compactor to go off and bid. And basically Gibson Thomas is in the final stages of putting together everything for a compactor and putting it out to bid. So just wanted to let council know that, you know, that's going to probably take place this year to bid the compactor out. Now, the work I was saying is probably not going to happen this year. Something that we may want to get to budget in the future, you know, to have a compactor for those transportation facility. And one final thing is, I spoke with Brian Spesny from Pendon today regarding the traffic signal replacement project. There are five parking spots that are in conflict in the downtown that need to be eliminated. There are various points on Ligonier Street, and the reason behind this is site business, stop bar locations, and mainly pertaining to the safety for pedestrians crossing, you know, the crosswalk and also vehicle stops, you know, so they can see the pedestrians. So they, I can forward the email. That way, everyone can see the actual locations. Now, two of the locations were handicap spots, and we're not, what we're going to do is then do those slots further back so that way we're not eliminating two handicap spots for the other ones. Really, we don't have any choice just because of the PDA ramp locations, how they're accessible from the sidewalk compared to other vehicles. So I'll forward the email to council. They didn't get it until later today, so. And that was it.
Thanks, Mike Thor. Chief Slesman?
Real quick, we made an arrest on the BP robbery that occurred at the beginning of March. We had a tough time tracking this guy down. But we did make an arrest on the robbery at the BP. It was from Johnstown area. John and I, John, Chief Brazile, I will comment on the Harrison Avenue fire. It's being looked at by our department along with the state fire marshal. We're looking into that fire.
Just as Chief Slesman said there, the fire is looking, being looked into out there as kind of a suspicious fire at this time of nature. The fire investigators for the insurance company had come in, and the point of origin is where we sit. But they kind of found some things that I saw, but during the time of day and everybody being locked up. But there's a lot of things that go into that. And like I said, it's being looked at right now. There's nothing that we know further than that. So it's in our authorities' hands right now, which is Latrobe Police Department, and probably the state police fire marshals are looking also.
Okay, thank you. Ann?
Now, just trying to get everybody covered for us.
Hard to do now, isn't it?
That's all I ask.
Well, there was one thing on Ann's report that I forgot to bring up, too. We were going to talk about this. It was, Ann was looking into this flood plain management service program. She attended a meeting with the US Army Corps of Engineers, and basically what it was is, it's a free survey, if I'm right, to look at our water...
It's a study. They'll do like a hydrologic study of the Salt Run watershed that would really go up into Gary and all the water is coming down here. And there's a match. There's no fee we would have to pay for it. The RNC will do it, and then that would give us the pool layer on to be able to plug in those numbers and say, well, if we put a rain garden here or swivel over there or whatever, we would be able to calculate the flow from the study. And we'll have those numbers forever.
Oh, that's cool.
Yeah, I think it's good to do.
Did you know of this?
Yeah.
It was interesting. It sounds interesting, wasn't it?
There's no, there's no fee, so.
Love those kind of things.
Are they making any requirement of us, someone's giving them a letter or something?
We have to, we have to give them a letter that we're interested. By October, we'll know. It's a quick turnaround.
And you had mentioned that you were looking at houses that needed to potentially be demolished. How is that coming? Is there a number of them, or?
A few. Yeah, I talked to land back about one, and two more that we could just quickly start getting possession of. It's practically a gap. It's not a lot that, I mean, it's a gap that we have to do. Especially in addition, if we get possession, we can care about her for any reason, but if it's not in our possession, then it has to be strictly outside. A lot of things have to happen before it's being brought down.
Did the map, was it maps in with that one that did form now running?
Yeah. Oh, yeah.
Okay. Huh? Sell the land, sell the lot, okay. Any other questions for anybody? Any of the department heads? Okay, Mr. Gray, you're up.
Okay, Madam Mayor. The first item is I have a proposed resolution. It is for increase of salaries and setting salaries for the city manager at $65,000 per year, for the director in administration and finance at $62,000 per year, increasing the hourly wage for the position of crossing guard to 925 per year, and then further directing that all other ordinances or resolutions that are inconsistent with this are hereby repealed.
May I have a motion to adopt the resolution as outlined by the solicitor?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. May I have a second?
Second, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Forrest. Any questions? Ms. Peton?
Mr. Bartels?
Yes.
Mr. Baldieri?
Yes.
Mrs. Weller?
Yes.
Mr. Jankow?
Yes.
Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
Mr. Forrest?
Yes.
Mayor Wolford?
Yes. Resolution passes unanimously.
Madam Mayor, the next resolution is to approve the city manager's employment agreement. The agreement has been submitted to each of the members of council. It's been reviewed by Mr. Gray. We believe that it's in final form now for consideration and adoption.
May I have a motion to adopt the resolution as outlined by the solicitor? This would be the employment agreement to name Mike Gray as city manager.
So moved, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Forrest. May I have a second, please?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Bartels. Any questions? Ms. Peton?
Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
Mr. Baldieri?
Yes.
Mr. Bartels?
Yes.
Mr. Jankow?
Yes.
Mr. Forrest?
Yes.
Mrs. Weller?
Yes.
Mayor Wolford?
Yes. Motion carries unanimously. Mike, welcome aboard officially.
Thank you, Mayor. Next, Madam Mayor, we have a proposed resolution, and this is to appoint Stuart J. Alba as the newest member of the Latrobe zoning hearing board. His term of appointment would last until January 31st of 2024.
May I have a motion, please, to adopt the resolution as outlined by the solicitor?
So moved.
May I have a second?
I'll second.
Any questions?
Mr. Forrest?
Yes.
Mr. Baldieri?
Yes.
Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
Mrs. Weller?
Yes.
Mr. Jankow?
Yes.
Mr. Bartels?
Yes.
Mayor Wolford?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Alba.
Madam Mayor, next on the agenda is a motion item. It is to authorize the solicitor to advertise for notice of requests for bids for the repair and regular maintenance of the city of Latrobe parking garage.
May I have a motion to authorize the solicitor to advertise for bids?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. May I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mrs. Weller. Questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Next, Madam Mayor, we have another proposed resolution. This resolution is to adopt an agreement with Eastern Elevator Service and Sales Company for the inspection and preventive maintenance of two elevators, one in the municipal building and the other in the parking garage. The amount is $2,700 per year. It's for a five-year term, and this was the lowest and most advantageous proposal.
Okay, may I have a motion to adopt the resolution as outlined by the solicitor?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Bartels. May I have a second, please?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Jankow. Any questions?
Mike, this is, this was the other, this wasn't the company that put the one in the parking garage, right?
Correct.
This is the other company.
Yes.
I couldn't remember the name of the owner. That's why I wanted to make sure, because I wouldn't have to.
Your mumble, but I think you're doing that on purpose.
He knew what I was talking about.
Aren't you? Your mumble, but that's on purpose.
It was all purpose. He knew what I was talking about.
Okay. All right.
Mr. Baldieri?
Yes.
Mr. Jankow?
Yes.
Mr. Forrest?
Yes.
Mr. Bartels?
Yes.
Mrs. Weller?
Yes.
Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
Mayor Wolford?
Yes.
Next item, Madam Mayor, is a motion item. It's to approve 911's leasing financial proposal for the purchase of a roll-off truck. It's interested in the amount of 3.99% with the first payment due February 2020. It is contingent upon approval of the Department of Community and Economic Development pursuant to the local government unit debt act.
Okay, may I have a motion to adopt the resolution as outlined by the solicitor?
So moved.
Thanks, Mr. Baldieri. May I have a second, please?
Seconded.
You did that. Mr. Jankow, thank you. Questions? I have a question. Do we know how long it's going to take to get the DCED approval, or?
From what's ever seen before, you know, it could be about, you know, 60 days.
Okay.
So we still have plenty of time.
So we already did, we already did all that?
No, no, that's, that's what needs to be done physically. He needs to apply.
Oh, we need to apply, okay.
That's, that's a motion.
Okay. Oh, yeah, I guess it is. Sorry about that. Okay. Go ahead, Holly.
I just, all in favor?
Oh, I'm sorry, motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Go ahead.
Okay, so next is another motion, Madam Mayor, and this is to authorize the solicitor to prepare, advertise, and submit all the documentation for the local government unit debt act to the Department of Community and Economic Development, and this is requesting the approval for financing of the purchase of a roll-off truck.
Got ahead of myself there. Okay, so may I have a motion, please, to authorize the solicitor to prepare? Thank you, Mr. Kelly. May I have a second?
I'll second it.
Mr. Jankow? Okay. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries unanimously.
Madam Mayor, the next item is also a motion for consideration. It is to authorize the solicitor, manager, and consulting engineer to prepare and present to council and ordinance and all related materials to create and implement the stormwater management program.
May I have a motion, please, to authorize the city personnel to prepare the ordinance and all related information for the MS4 program?
As so moved, Madam Mayor.
Okay, stuff, okay, stuffy made the motion. Christine, second? Christine, seconded.
Madam Mayor, just a question. Are we under the guidelines by the state as to when this has to be accomplished, the completion of that order?
No, no, our just food production plan, the most recent one started in 2018, so to comply with that food production plan is why we're setting this in place. But there's no actually mandate by the state saying that we have to have, you know, this in effect at a certain period.
Is there a timeframe that you folks are looking at, who will be working on it?
Yes, we're looking at to hopefully have something put together by this fall, you know, we're really able to do this more well with management user fee.
I think he'd head up on this a little bit ahead once we come out of the pandemic. And we might be in a position where there'll be grant money made available, but see, we've already started the progress, you know what I mean? So that would put us up a little bit higher on the pedestal than the town that's sitting back saying, hope this goes away. Exactly. That's just the way it's been being.
Well, speaking of, is there any legal action against, or is there any major efforts to try to get the state to pull this back a little bit?
It doesn't look like there's anything. If anything, there's going to be more stringent protocol set in place to reduce it. You know, we all know if we're going to increase the amount that we have to reduce the settlement each year right now instead of 10% settlement production. So, you know, with that, and also with aging infrastructure and everything else, it doesn't seem like that's going to be any better.
This was mandated back in 2003. This plan was implemented, and it sat on a back burner for a long time, and it got, and now everybody wants to get it moved. It's had to take 10 years for anybody to move to get anything with it.
And I don't think we ought to look at this necessarily as a bad thing. I mean, we want clean water and clean, you know.
Because we think we're just on earth.
Yeah, so.
Well, I agree. I just, I wonder, too, if we can, and I'm not the kind of a budget committee guy, but if we're going to be letting a special fee that's going to add, you know, tens of dollars a year, you know, a hundred dollars a year, whatever this is going to come out to be, can we look to try and offset that through any kind of cut somewhere else? I know, I know that the fee is different than a tax. I'm not confusing those things, but it's coming out of someone's pocket anyway. So I'm just wondering, could we try to find a way to ease it a little bit?
Well, yes, yes. And one of the things I'll get into later on as we move forward is I've been working on a stormwater user fee management credit system. And basically, what this credit system is, is it applies to the residential, non-residential, commercial, industrial, church organizations, schools, and it provides them with ways to reduce the fee that they have to pay compared to what their EORU is based upon the property. So, you know, we're trying to get the community's involvement, you know, with this. So that way, you know, if they do these type of things, it's helping in the result, which is reducing gluten. And so overall, it's a little bit of a city interest because they're able to do these types of actions.
And I know there's been some discussion about, like, there's a separate fee that's collected, that will be collected separately, and I think goes into a separate fund and can be used for anything other than this, and will be audited as such. So there's a lot of, there's checks and balances in there to make sure that, you know, the money that is collected for this MS4 program is used.
In the same sense, is there going to be a separate line item where they use a separate line item, so is there any area on?
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Madam Mayor, the next item for consideration is a resolution. This is authorizing encroachment easement with and Renee Kraus. It is for a property located at 1201/1203 Ligonier Street. And the nature of the encroachment is a gas meter that had to be relocated from the inside of the building to the outside of the building. And the dimensions of the encroachment are spelled out in the resolution, but it is 12 inches in depth and 17 inches in width that is going to protrude out into the sidewalk area.
Okay, ma'am. A motion to adopt the resolution as outlined?
So moved.
May I have a second, please?
Seconded.
Any questions? Ms. Peton?
Mr. Bartels?
I'm sorry, I'm just before I, I'm just trying to look back and see what we discussed.
This was...
It's a quarter of Ligonier and Chestnut.
No, I thought...
We've done this before.
This was Scotty Chase.
Yeah, a lot of times, you know, people have a small portrait.
What, what is it?
It's a corner of Chestnut.
Okay.
Dr. Kraus?
Oh, Dr. Kraus, yeah.
Okay. Yes.
Mr. Jankow?
Yes.
Mrs. Weller?
Yes.
Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
Mr. Baldieri?
Yes.
Mr. Forrest?
Yes.
Mayor Wolford?
Yes.
Madam Mayor, the next resolution that we have is authorizing the city manager to sign the grant documents that are relative to the $1,600 DUI grant purchased by the police department of new bulletproof vests.
It is a resolution, yes. I'm sorry if I said otherwise. You didn't. I wasn't thinking. I was still thinking about something else, sorry. We have a motion to adopt the resolution as outlined by the solicitor?
I'll make that motion.
May I have a second, please?
Second, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Questions?
Mr. Bartels?
Yes.
Mrs. Weller?
Yes.
Is it Mr. Baldieri?
Yes.
Mr. Jankow?
Yes.
Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
Mr. Forrest?
Yes.
Mayor Wolford?
Yes.
Madam Mayor, the last item that I have for consideration this evening is a resolution. It's approving a memorandum of understanding between the city of Latrobe Police Department and the Dr. Robert Ketterer Charter School. We've reviewed the agreement. It is, it's an agreement that is adopted pursuant to the Safe Schools Act. It is essentially a standard form that is used in these situations, and we would recommend that it be approved.
Thank you. May I have a motion to adopt the resolution as outlined by the solicitor?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mrs. Weller. May I have a second, please?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Jankow. Questions?
Just one for the chief. Chief, is this pretty much in substantially the same form as the agreement we had in the previous two years?
It is, sir.
No dramatic changes?
No changes.
Okay.
Any other questions? Holly?
Mrs. Weller?
Yes.
Mr. Forrest?
Yes.
Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
Mr. Baldieri?
Yes.
Mr. Bartels?
Yes.
Mr. Jankow?
Yes.
Mayor Wolford?
Yes. Okay, that concludes our agenda items. Now we move on to un, is that it? Do you have anything else?
I have nothing else, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Unfinished business? What do we got? I think we have something under unfinished business.
What's up with the, what's up with the radio tower?
Well, we're going to discuss that on the agenda this month, but certainly only the agenda to talk about that. Oh, you walk up to him on the top.
You can talk to him offline.
We can talk to him offline about that before that wraps up.
And can I wrap something else, sir? Since it is so cold, it's time to start discussing Christmas. Actually, it's been brought to our attention that everyone is ready to make plans for the holly jolly and the bonfire. And so I went around and asked several businesses their opinions. Last year, as you all know, we did separate events. We did the bonfire one night. We did the holly jolly event another day. And really, everyone is in the agreement that they really don't mind when we do anything. And so I thought a lot about this, and, you know, we had a group of people last year come and request that we have everything on one day. And so last year, we didn't do that. So I'm thinking perhaps this year, we should try to do everything on one day and see how it goes. Does anybody have any thoughts about that?
What day?
It would be December 7th is the holly jolly.
Then maybe those who want it one day, it's just their own... Maybe those who want it one day, it's just their own belief and opinion and not necessarily the belief of the various businesses, but you seem to keep...
Honestly, I posed it both ways, and most people are just happy to have an event, and so they didn't really have an opinion either way, and so, you know, I feel like we're here to serve everyone, and I feel like last year, we did it one way, and perhaps this year, we should listen to the other half of the people, try it another way, and see which way works best.
I'm still of the opinion, the more reasons and more times you can get people in the downtown, the better off it's going to be, so by consolidating everything one night, that's the night people will come. You have something this night, this night, this night, this night, no, hopefully it will draw people down into the town more often.
And I did mention that, and some people had said that they weren't going to be open late for the bonfire anyways. You know what I mean? Because the businesses aren't, they would have to make an extra effort to do that, and so I see both sides of it. I honestly, either way, obviously, is fine with me. I think the more that we serve, you know, our residents is better, but like I said, I just feel that, to be fair to everyone, maybe we should try it the other way this time, since we did have a whole group of people come and request that, and, you know, and again, whatever your thoughts are, that's my opinion. Another thing we need to think about, too, and this never crossed my mind before, but the fact that we need to think about cleanup of the bonfire and the cost that goes along with that for the Parkinson rack, right, Mike?
Yes, and I think what we're going to do is out of the, out of the fund that we have set place, we're going to, we're going to reserve a little bit of that for any type of nature of restoration of cleanup that we need to do. I know that Craig was talking about that they were going to be doing some work in the infield. We just want to make sure that, you know, if we have the bonfire and the damages, the dirt that's already there, we have to run and set aside to, you know, fix.
I mean, I think in other years, I think, I think they're going to invest some significant money in the infield of First Ward Playground this year, so I think that in past years, it was not the best, so they were able to, you know, it wasn't that big of a deal, but now that they're going to invest some money in getting that infield in better playing condition, they want to make sure that, you know, that they don't have to sink a whole bunch of more money into it afterwards, that we get it back to where it's supposed to be, but to Christine's point, you know, I, I, I think we ought to give a shot and see. I think, I agree with you. I think we did it that way last year. I think we should try it this way this year. I almost feel as though things were so uncomfortable last year that that may be why we don't have the businesses back. I want to support the businesses. They want to have the holly jolly event on the first Saturday, the following week, for a variety of different reasons, and that's what the businesses want to do as their kind of holly jolly Christmas kickoff in downtown. So I think, you know, I tend to agree with Christine. We tried it the other, you know, did it that way. Let's try it this way this year, and then we can see.
You know, I also just wanted to let some council know that, you know, I talked also just after Christine and I talked about, you know, what was going on this year, and one of the other things that just came up this year, which is going to be different from all other years, is they're starting hunting on that Saturday. So a lot of people I know that are going to their hunting camps are going on right after Thanksgiving, you know, so, you know, it's always been traditionally that hunting was always a day after Thanksgiving. Now it's going to be Saturday, so, you know, with this effect, you know, even the people that would, you know, come to this, you know, on that day, you know, now we're going to be in their hunting camp, setting one to camp on Saturday or whenever they went with this, you know, also affect that. But, yeah, and like I said, you know, I'm 100% behind whatever way we choose, you know, it's not... But do we have a date set on when it was going to be?
The holly jolly is December 7th. Seven, December 7th.
Is there any preference, Christine, by the organizers of the bonfire? Those who actually make it happen? Is there any preference on their part in terms of the date?
Well, obviously, you know, Beth is the one that still would like to run it, and I think she had the 29. But that's, we're planning far enough in advance, and that's why I think it's important to discuss it now, that I think it would not be a problem. Nothing is in place yet, right? The contracts haven't been signed. We haven't spent any money, and so that's why it's important to start discussing it, so we won't have that problem.
Yeah, I think that the neighbors are picking the date now is so we have time to, you know, Beth was looking at to do some things. I'm not going to really, you know, say at this point what they are, but in order to reserve, you know, the activities for this function of bonfire meeting, it's set a date, so we don't run into the issue of it being too late in order to get the events that we need there, so...
So you don't get the impression there's any logistical reason why one date would be better?
No.
Do the police have anything to say about that as far as traffic?
Not really. You know, we'll, we'll deal with two dates, one date. I don't recall any issues last year with two separate events, but I think we'll be fine.
And Chief Brazili, anything with the fire departments?
Not really, other than is the location still going to remain the same? So that's going to remain the same, so...
I hadn't thought about that. You know, Friday night, I mean, when I went to Bonfire last year, there was a lot of families that was up there, and I hadn't even thought about the fact that a lot of the best people on the hunt, I mean, a lot of people would mind.
Yeah, you know, since they changed that, you know, at least the people I've spoken to, you know, that hunters just like that, all just, I don't know what they was thinking there. They just screwed up tradition.
You mean, making it Saturday?
They screwed up tradition since 1963 here.
I know. I know.
Kids were at school on Monday.
Yeah, I, I, okay, if we're having it the same day, I see a conflict of location. You have the bonfire pulling people away from businesses that are trying to establish, you know, the holly jolly event.
It doesn't start until after they're closed.
Yeah.
That's the difference.
Bonfires later on.
The idea is to keep the people in town till the bonfire starts, because bonfire doesn't start till pretty much dark, right? What, what?
No. No, no, we started, I think we started at six or 6:30. And it went, it went to eight.
Oh, that's right. That's right. My, my times are on these stuff. They were there by 6:00.
We were pretty, we were done by 10, I think it was, by 10 JB, 9.
Try 8:30 stuff.
Well, see, I'll be the kitchen cleaner outside.
It's where you need to stay.
As long as we're not drawing people away from the business to the bonfire, I'm fine.
They were, I mean, when they were here last year, they wanted to do it all in one day, so I think we just give a shot and see what happens. Okay, anything else on our unfinished business? New business? Any new business?
I have some happen.
Do you?
Yes. Joe from the Art Center contacted me about putting a conjunction with, have you know about this? A conjunction with EWCPC, Lowe's, and Williams. They created a six-foot tall Daniel Tiger to welcome people to Billy Coe for the Mr. Rogers family. He kind of wanted it up all summer, but we kind of said maybe a week before, and then maybe a week after, and then he kind of placed the city after that to do this. He's okay with that as well. He needs electricity because the arm weighs. He said it's to you guys, just to make sure that everybody's on board if there's, you know, if anything, so...
How can you say, "No, it's Daniel Tiger"?
I can't.
Come on.
You can't.
No, it's a, it's like a stand-up thing in a way. I have to mention...
So it's made out of what? Copper?
Wood.
Wood? Okay, have weight armor?
Yeah.
And where does it go?
The point. Right now, it's going up to the point.
Yeah, like for a week before and a week after, Mr. Rogers Day, and then we're going to figure out where it can go after that.
Right.
Well, the Christmas tree, don't get me started.
You guys, you guys, we can get to go.
Yeah.
Okay.
But we have... It's good for the kids.
Yeah, that's awesome. That'll be fun. Okay. Any other business? Any other new business? Any other comments from our citizens? Art Centers, let's remove Art Centers.
The answer is I'm asking a question, and this is partly the attorney man. I'm thinking it's liability, and I'm thinking if somebody's watching, bear go this way and runs into something, and maybe we need an agreement before whoever wants to put it there to, to just basically accept all responsibility for any liability for what might happen, whether a strong wind blows it over, blows it into a car, it's going to be a lot.
You know that it's going to be strictly an attack?
So I only throw that out, just a signed agreement's all we need. Don't have to charge them anything. Something that says that the person that puts that there is responsible for whatever may happen.
I mean, I agree with you. John, do you have an opinion?
Well, we can, we can take a look at that and advise counsel. And I appreciate the concern. I, I don't know what their insurance situation is, but we can certainly advise counsel on that.
City managers report, if anything else you'd like?
Just a few things. Holly, I'm in the voice with CB Tracy, we're giving the city's healthcare policy, so that's, that's all I'm going to say.
Is that, is that expire like 2/30th the new, because we're July 1 here, right? For day?
Still, we have to provide that. Also, just to let the council know that we had a managing stormwater workshop that was held on April 30th. Turned out very well. You know, a lot, we had a lot of residents from, you know, uniting township, every township in Latrobe, so it was helpful. So, you know, we're, we're looking to the future, you know, maybe having one or two another year of a group like that.
Yeah, we talked about it.
Yeah, in the evening on that time, too, flush away. It was, they kind of pick the hours, what we, I think, run them, about seven hours.
But you had a good turnout, you said.
Yeah, it was used for that time of day.
What was the tone? What was the tone of the people?
You know what? They willing to learn. You know, they, they enjoy it. You know, there was, there was a little bit of issues between some, but they were just targeting particular areas of townships and this and that because they were trying to figure out what the problem is. But they did a very well presentation, and, you know, we had information, and, you know, they were there to help, you know, so they still, overall, they're doing well. Was it recording? Well, yes, yes.
Most of it. It's a battery right now, man.
That's all I have.
Anything else?
Mayor's reported, just want to remind everyone that, you know, I think our, well, we won't be back again until after Memorial Day, so there'll be the Memorial Day celebration